The July 23rd, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. I'm going to ask, who's out there? Pat Donaldson to do the invocation. And we will be letting the Pledge of Allegiance by our Treasurer, David Patterson.
I was gonna do that myself, look at that. Powerheads, dear gracious heavenly Father, we are very thankful that you've given us another day. Lord, I ask you to bless our city, our police department, our fire department, our residents and our businesses. Lord, keep us in your hands and Lord, wherever we go and whatever we do, protect us, Lord, and protect this city. We praise you and thank you for everything that you have done for us and everything that you're gonna continue to do for us. In your name we pray, Lord, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you all for being here today. Today's meeting looks like it may be a short meeting. You know, just depending on, what do you call it? What's the section called, our elected officials' reports?
Oh, yes.
Not by, you know, I'm not trying to say anything, but, you know. Councilmember Montero has a presentation on tonight's agenda. The Hawthorne's President Council's presentation to the Chief of Police and the K-9 Unit. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Good evening, Ms. May, thank you, council, community members, staff. I have this check to the chief. But first, I just wanna read, you know, some of the names that donate money because this is a collective effort and to show how the community do love our police department. So I'm going to read some of these names that donate money. You know, so we go from, you know, McDonald's, number 23037, Bluebird Liquor, Zoila Telio, Willem and Hassan Foundation, Rosa Araruz, Imperial Project, Anita Schurf, Mary Flat, Dr. Sonia Smith, Santa Maria Dental Office, Catherine Nibel, Robert King, even our own Russell Mihara, Carol Stein Howard, Women's Club of Hawthorne, Marcel MacIntyre, Alex Montero, Chevron Corporation, South Bay Ford, Bob Marsella, Guy Hock of Realtors, Hawthorne Executive Group, The Schneider Dental, C.S. Lumber, South Bay Whip, Dr. Helen Morgan, and goes on, goes on, goes on, and even our councilwoman Valentine donate also from her stipend. So, chief, I have over here three checks. That is total of $16,550. The $16,000 checks come from the Hawthorne President's Council of all the money that we collected. And then the Bluebird wrote direct to the police department $300 and the McDonald wrote $250 direct to you. So you have here $16,550 and put in a good use with the K-9. And this is the first time we hit this milestone.
Yes.
So it's on your watch, so that's me, you know, you know what I mean, right? Next year, we have to do better.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. On behalf of the Hawthorne President's Council, you know, Ms. Love is in Texas, she's my VP, and all the other members of the Hawthorne President's Council, we love the K-9 Unit, Hawthorne PD, they do an excellent job every day, you know, making sure that our neighborhoods are safe and to keep us safe, and thanks God for the officers, and we have to pray for them for their own safety. Thank you, chief.
You wanna say anything?
Just wanna say thank you very much, this is truly, we'll put this to good use and the K-9 program is as strong as ever and we hope to do this again next year. Thank you very much. It's all them, it's all them right there. Councilman Montero also has a presentation on tonight's agenda for Bishop Harry Hendricks on his 23rd pastoral celebration. Is he here? Do you wanna do it from over there again?
Actually, Mr. May, I'm gonna postpone that presentation because the bishop was out of town. He was also was in Texas, because he's a bishop, so, and the wife didn't send me the bio. So we're gonna put it for August 27, I believe.
Oh, okay, got it, excellent. All right, well, thanks, it's good that you're, we're recognizing them, so that's a good thing. Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications, sir.
During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Melissa Segal, talking about Hope Chapel and Kids' Day.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Vargas, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, and staff, City Council. I'd like to invite each and every one of you, including our great city, to Hope Chapel on August 18th, on Sunday, at 10 o'clock AM for Kids' Day and back-to-school supplies and fun activities. The address is 13560 Hawthorne Boulevard. Our telephone number is 310-970-9023 if you have any questions. It's behind Hawthorne Hardware, I put flyers in the back, I'll pass out flyers to you. And thank you so very much, hope you all have a great evening.
Do you have the flyers on email form?
I probably can get...
Do you have enough copies there for us?
I do, I have copies right here and I have copies in the back.
Okay, that's, we'll need that, thank you. All right, I was gonna say Bishop Donaldson, I'm sorry, Pat Donaldson. I was thinking bishops here, I mean, I'm sorry. Pat Donaldson from Hawthorne Chamber.
Yes, okay, Patricia Donaldson, okay. So I want to make an announcement that our golf tournament, it's the 5th Annual Golf Tournament, it's gonna be at the Rio Hondo, will be giving away, well, if it's a hole-in-one, a brand-new car from South Bay Ford. There's so much more that's gonna happen this year than's ever happened at any golf tournament. It's a ton of surprises, a ton of door prizes and auctions. So I just wanna remind everyone, that's going to be September 19th. So if you are interested in going, we have flyers out here, you can call the chamber. And now I would like to, oh, I'd like to let everyone know that my great-grandson got his 103 stitches out last Thursday. They had to put him to sleep to do that, but he's doing much, much better. And I thank you for your prayers and everything, your phone calls, thank you so much. Okay, so, one more thing I wanna mention is that on TV, they talked about the Hawthorne Police Department and Scotty. And they said that we're the only Hawthorne Police Department in California that does what Scotty does. And now the other police departments wanna start doing it. So I'm very proud of our police department. Now, I would like to introduce a new member of our chamber, and his name is Andrew Carter. And he's gonna take a minute or two to come up and tell you about his business. And I'm gonna present him with a plaque, come on, Andrew. So here's the plaque. He just joined our chamber, he's a business owner in Hawthorne, now tell a little bit about yourself.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Andrew Carter, I live in Hawthorne. I started a business last year, Alamin Janitorial. What we do is, we, wow. We, basically what we do is, we clean buildings, we do commercial janitorial service. We do floors, towels, marbles, marble floors, terrazzo floors, tile floors. We strip them, seal them, wax them, and we also, we also do carpet cleaning. I'm sorry, I'm just very...
No, absolutely, let me ask you a question. What's the best way people can find out about your business?
We have a website at Alamin Janitorial. It's A-L-A-M-I-N Janitorial.
Do you do mostly flooring, stripping and waxing, or do you do the other janitorial services as well?
We do all janitorial services.
Okay, so, okay.
Yes, my phone number is 424-567-2970. And we also have an Instagram account, A-A-L-A-M-I-N underscore Janitorial.
And he did the carpets at the chamber, and he did a fabulous job, spots out that no one else could take down.
Okay.
He's great.
Thank you for being here, sir, congratulations on your new business.
Okay, thank you, thank you for allowing me to be here.
Absolutely. All right, excellent, let's give him a round of applause for starting up his new business, that's a... We applaud small, new business owners here in the city of Hawthorne. Excellent, so, Peter Yu? Peter Yu, how you doing, sir?
My name is Peter Yu. I am a building specialist. I specialize building high, building deep, and building efficiently. My mantra is, I can help affordable housing. Now pack a lot of people comfortably on a small area. Then everybody will get home by the work. Say you work at a city hall, you live next block, you come to work by walking. At nighttime, the stores are around, you walk around, your friend, your colleague is around. You don't need to drive a car, you have a car, but you don't need to drive it. I want the city be a model. Well, by the way, I'm so happy to be here. I feel, well, I feel from my heart, this is the warmest council I never met in my life. See, I see the councilman's smile at the audience, I feel I'm welcome. I feel this city is a progressive city. This city can be a model of the United States. Let's, let's show, let's show, let's show our city what we can do here. So I changed my presentation in the last minute, just because I see you. I make an oral proposal right away, I throw out my presentation. My proposal, all proposal is this. I'm asking you use your power to condemn some of the property around you. By, for the eminent domain, no law, you can do that, right? Based on your need, I'm gonna help you to design a community to house all the city employees, including city clerks, police officers, firemen, whatever, whoever work for the city. You live in the compound, you pay rent, let's see, what kind of rent you paying, I'm talking about it. The market value for one bedroom apartments right now in the city is $1,200. You pay $600 a month. Two bedroom apartment, you pay $1,200 a month. The market is 18 or above. Your, your rent is your payment. If you live long enough, you owns it. If you, if you move on to other places, whatever time you lived, you earn equity. You don't have lived 30 years, but if you live here 30 years, of course, you get outright. But if you halfway, you promoted, you become, you become a senator before, maybe you move to Washington DC. But whatever you lived here, you earn equity. That can be, that can be done easily by my idea. I'm gonna challenge you guys to, do what I just, just asked. To show how, how easy it can be done, by the way, it's not that difficult, the power's in your hand.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Take, take three of you to vote yes, it's done.
Thank you.
And I will assist you, I will assist you honestly. Right now, I'm too old to move around now. When I was young, I was all over the world, by the way, every nation, every country on the earth. But I'm not going anywhere anymore.
Thank you, sir.
I'm now resident here four years now. The rest of my life, I'll be here, I'll be working with you, but don't expect I work too long, because I'm 88 years old.
You're gonna start the idea, not gonna see it through, what's going on?
But five more years is more than enough, because what I just said, two, three years, we got it done. Start from here. You condemn some of the property around you.
Sir, sorry, you're past your three-minute limit.
For eminent domain, you acquire land, I help you do the planning, okay? I wanna see every city employee got affordable housing right at work. By the way, that's important, why is it important? Because that's the model. Once that done, you have shown, you have shown, you can do the rest of the city.
Peter.
You can show the whole world.
Thank you.
Peter. Yeah, you, they got a three, three-minute... Well, we can't decide on this right now, we have to talk about it first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you here in the city of Hawthorne, okay? Thank you, thank you for being here in the city of Hawthorne, sir. Okay, anybody else wishing to address the city council, please come up?
Good wonderful summer, summer evening. Lethell Williams, the city of Hawthorne, a proud parent. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, department heads. Happy, happy summer. It's getting warm and people are enjoying our city. This hotel over here is, is just flourishing, flourishing, flourishing. And it's a wonderful thing to know that the mall site is up for sale. Hello SpaceX, hello Tesla. It's still an open thing for you to make it a wonderful car dealership, to see them beautiful, beautiful Teslas not only parked in the closed-end parking lot and not just welcoming film industries to come film on your domain. Hey, I say please, just like this gentleman here, I welcome the Koreans, the Japanese. That Korean hotel downtown is phenomenal, totally phenomenal. Even we could do another hotel right here at this mall site, it's open, it's open. I like to promote my city and then Crackle Barrel. Crackle Barrel, I've been in touch with them to let them know that we have a wonderful empty space right here on our wonderful boulevard, which was the hometown buffet site there. Crackle Barrel is more than welcome to come because there is not one within the vicinity. Applebee's, Applebee's say that's a little bit too small for what they do. But Crackle Barrel, you'll definitely, definitely have a team that will work for you to reach out, even with our city planning people. Crackle Barrel, you're not nowhere here, nowhere near. We will be the first, and hey, Mr. Mueller, as you go tomorrow and testify, elections is right here coming up in our city, we gonna be fresh, we gonna have new leaders. Let's look forward to it. Thank you, Lethell Williams.
Next person? If I don't see anybody else, I'm gonna declare oral communications, anybody else? I'm gonna declare oral communications closed, so ordered. Thank you for the community's feedback. Okay, where are we at? Let's see.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I would like to introduce our new planning director, our interim planning director, Mrs. Sherry Rep. Lotzmann, who was deputy city manager for city of Palos Verdes Estates in charge of planning and building departments.
Hi ma'am, welcome to the city of Hawthorne, can you tell us something about yourself?
Well, I can. First off, I'm Sherry Rep. Lotzmann, and it's a pleasure to meet with the council, the mayor, the mayor pro tem, the other elected officials, as well as everyone else. And so I was informed that you had an opening and that you needed some help, I had several people call me, actually. And so it was my pleasure to be able to come down and meet with the city manager and the city attorney. I will be your interim planning and community development director while you are searching for a permanent person to fill that vacancy. And hopefully, I will be able to provide some assistance to you. I do have quite a few years of experience. I started over in the city of Carson, started as entry-level assistant planner, worked all my way up to the planning director. And then from there, I went over to Palos Verdes Estates, where I was the director for planning, building, code enforcement, building and safety, just about everything, because it was a very small city. We were lucky enough to hire a public works director, so I was able to divide that up and then I became the city, the deputy city manager. So, but I'm a local girl, I actually was born in the Sentinela Hospital, so just up the street. Had a lot of family that were in Inglewood and Hawthorne area. In fact, my family was dislocated because of the freeway. But that's okay, the freeway ended up not going through their house, so their house is still there, but they moved. So I have a lot of fond memories as a child growing up in the Hawthorne area. And I look forward to working with all of you, if you have any questions or you just would like to chat, I will be available to you. Thank you very much.
Welcome to the city of Hawthorne, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can you please give us your consent calendar, please?
Mr. Mayor, I have five items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item seven, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item eight, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item 10, resolution number 8095, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming Tuesday, August 6, 2019 as National Night Out Day. Item 11, resolution number 8117, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, accepting the federal aviation admiration grant in an amount not exceed, not to exceed $349,406 under the fiscal year 2019 Airport Improvement Program for revalidation of runway 725 and connector taxiways and remarking and authorizing and ratifying the Director of Public Works' execution of grant documents. Item 12, resolution number 8118, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving the form and authorizing distribution of a preliminary official statement and approving the form of authorizing the execution of a continuing disclosure certificate, all in connection with the offering and sale of taxable pension obligation bonds and authorizing and directing certain action, actions with respect thereto.
I make a motion for all items?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
There are no ordinances today at this, at this meeting, but I'm gonna ask my city manager, our city manager, to please proceed with the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I have items 15 through 18 for your approval tonight.
I make a motion on all the items?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
I'll ask the city attorney to please proceed with his consent calendar.
Yes, I have items number 20 and 21.
I make a motion for those two items? Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
We have three items, we have like about four items for the council discussion action items. So, councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, this is an event that's gonna happen on September 21st, it's a Saturday. The Lions Clubs International and the 4L3 and the Hawthorne Lions Club is gonna put this event at the Singer Center. And, and I would love to see if we can make it a city sponsoring event because it's going to benefit all the low-income families and childrens and seniors that is going to be required glasses. So they're gonna do examination and at the same time, give them glasses same day. So from 9:00 to 3:00, the event is free. So people that needs glasses and just go there, they'll have their eye exam and they'll give them the glasses right on the spot. And if they don't have your glasses, they will mail it to you for free. So, may I have a motion?
Can we do a verbal consensus, Mr. City Attorney, as opposed to vote? I can, I'm in agreement, concur. Looks like everybody on the council is conquering.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Excellent, excellent. Your twenty, item number 23?
Oh, my, I'm 23? Where, no, I'm in 23, oh, I skipped. Okay, item 23 is considered canceling the August 13 regular meeting. You know, the staff has been working pretty hard and we have like, the city clerk's office is having some challenge. They're not because, you know, they do their work well, but they're having some... They are not because, you know, they do their work well, but, uh, they're having some, uh, tough, tough time right now of our, from family issues. So I would love to give all the staff a break for us not to having a meeting on the thirteen. And we will have meeting on August twenty-seven. Because most of the city, they just give break to the, to the first week in August with the staff not to come to the meeting and stay here until eight, nine o'clock.
Okay, I'm gonna, I concur as well. Concur? All right. Looks, looks like all the council members are concurring. If nobody's, someone's not in concurrence, just speak up. Okay, good, we're good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, Olivia Valentine's gonna talk about, she's gonna have two items, and she's gonna talk about the South Bay Cog.
Okay, thank you. So, um, the cog has started a new, uh, program, and that is to give council members of the various cities updates on what's going on. So, um, I've, I've, uh, made arrangements so that the council will get the full report, but I'm not going to read the full report. I'm just going to hit the highlights. So this is the quarterly cog update, South Bay Council of Governments' out, update from April through June. Uh, first, they wanted to, uh, they wanted everyone to know that the South Bay Fiber Network is on target. Uh, there, there has been an approved implementation of the South Bay Fiber Network, linking all fifteen city halls in a fiber ring at the same or lower prices than they are currently paying for more service. We've had a presentation on that here. Costs of capital construction completely have been paid for through Measure M sub-regional funds, and the system should be operational around June twenty twenty. That will bring us all much improved, uh, communication. So that's really exciting. On the environmental side, um, the, uh, each city has to integrate a vulnerability assessment and adaptation strategies with respect to climate change into the safety element of their general plan. I assume our general, our people are on top of this. This will identify the risks of climate change, such as sea level rise, cliff erosion, frequency and intensity of fires, the need for flood control, et cetera. We are working with the cog on vulnerability assessments. A consultant is working on a plan for each of the cities. We are waiting for a finished product, and then we will incorporate it into our general plan. As far as advocacy, another thing that the cog does, um, the led, the cog's legislative positions are on the website, and the cog cosponsored a housing forum with the South Bay Association of Realtors. Uh, the twenty-first annual general assembly will be on Thursday, March ninth, twenty twenty, and will address intersections of issues such as housing, mobility, tech access, commerce, and the importance of data. And, um, with respect to each of the cities, because each city, the cog has, has, um, projects with respect to each of its cities. And with respect to Hawthorne, I have, um, requested that Doug Kraus give a report on the energy initiatives that the cog is working on our city with. And that will be done at the next, uh, council meeting, so he will be giving a report on that. And that's all I have on the cog.
Um, thank you, ma'am. And you also have item number twenty-six. Would you like to proceed on that?
Yes. So I'm going to go ahead and, can I go ahead and, uh, do my, my elected report on KHHR? Because that, the resolution ties in with that. My, I was going to...
Why'd you draw it into this? You're...
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm, my, I'm asking to amend resolution eighty thirty-eight, but it doesn't make sense unless I do my report, which, which is part of the elected, uh, elected officials' reports. On the K, on KHHR. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, that's fine.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. In other words, I'll do it now as opposed to doing it later.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were saying.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Okay. So last Thursday, July eighteenth, the KHHR Communities Network Committee, uh, Committee had its third meeting, bringing together seventeen city and county members, together with the airport lessees, owners of Advanced Air and the Jet Center and Hawthorne Hangar Operations. We had a substantial public audience from the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, this, this committee has grown and has developed a significant public audience. We were joined by the FAA, which introduced its new SpaceX One departure route. And that new departure route is, is, is being, um, proposed to avoid conflicting with LAX air traffic. There's not expected to be any significant increase in noise with the new departure route, which is, is supposed to be effective, uh, December first. The FAA also has agreed to be available for technical questions as long as they are submitted thirty days in advance of an expected answer. They had already advised us that they cannot be a permanent part of our committee. And we also at that meeting had a request from Manhattan Beach to join our Communities Network Committee. So my resolution is to direct the city attorney to amend resolution eighty thirty-eight regarding the community, uh, the KHHR Communities Network Committee by deleting the FAA from its membership and by adding Manhattan Beach as a member. And that's, that's what I propose, and I'd like to get concurrence on, on that.
All right, concur. I concur. Everybody concurs.
Okay, all right. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Good. Okay, ma'am. Thank you. All right, is any, let's see. Okay, so there's, uh, so we all concur. We all, we just, we don't have to vote on everything. Sometimes there's certain things that council members are asking for that are outside of the agenda, um, that are allowed, and we could just do a verbal consent. Okay, so elected officials' reports and recommendations, starting off with our city treasurer, David Patterson.
I just wanna thank the community for coming out, participating in the process. That's it.
Excellent. Uh, Mr. City Clerk?
Yeah, I wanna again, also thank everyone for being here tonight and also, uh, everyone watching at home. Um, also, um, I wanna make sure, um, to just announce, I'm sure the council's also gonna talk about this, is, uh, please make sure to attend National Night Out on Tuesday, August sixth, at Memorial Park. Uh, commend council member Valentine for bringing the community together to host the event, as well as the volunteers, which include the Holly Park Homeowners Association. Uh, we posted the event on Nextdoor, and a few people asked what National Night Out is. So I wanted to simply show that National Night Out is a community police awareness raising night in the U.S. Many states throughout the country celebrate the event on the first Tuesday of August each year. Our city's event will include food, games, music, and prizes. So please make sure, uh, to come out. Um, the next one's just simply, I just wanna thank, uh, the city clerk's office for, um, we have a great team. Um, I really look forward to coming to the office, so just wanna thank Monica, Diana, and our two interns, Josh and Walter. Um, the last topic I wanna bring up is a simple suggestion, uh, because it is really hot out there. So, um, if you don't have access to air conditioning at home, uh, just a couple of options are to visit your local library. Uh, we have the Weisberg Library here and also the Hawthorne Library. Um, and also, you can visit, uh, a local, um, library, I'm sorry, a museum. There's over twenty museums in LA County, and all of those museums offer free days. So, um, even if you can't really maybe come up with the funds to go to the museum, again, they're free. I'm actually gonna post tonight on Nextdoor, uh, a link to all the days, uh, when you can go to the museum for free in LA County. So please, uh, keep cool out there. Thank you.
Thank you for this. That kinda makes sense. I'll probably go to the museum and the library then. I'll turn out smart. I thought I was smart. I'll turn out smarter. Nah. I'm just kidding, guys. Council member Hadarawat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanna thank everyone for coming out. Um, also wanted to congratulate the teams that, um, were at the Hyperloop competition. Uh, they did a phenomenal job. Um, it kinda sucks that none of the U.S. teams made it to the top rank, but it's, it's okay. I mean, at least we're placing somewhere in there. But it's just nice to finally have Hawthorne, you know, continue to get credit for something like we pushed in where no one else wanted to give it a chance. So, um, you know, it's always good to see that. Um, so again, congratulate the students. Thank you for coming at the community, and that's about it.
Thank you, council member. Council member Mike Daye?
Uh, well, to piggyback on, um, councilman Wad, we were, I had the opportunity to go see that Sunday, you know? And, um, it was, it was pretty amazing. I mean, it was, uh, all these young, bright minds from all over the world, uh, coming out with their machines to... I, I got an opportunity to talk to the, the Swedish team. And their, their, uh, pod went, I think, two hundred and fifty-nine miles an hour and stopped in about two seconds, and they were one of the four finalists. But there was, I, I, I don't know if there, there was one team that was an international team that had some Canadians and had some Americans in it. But, uh, yeah, you know, th- these are bright, young people, amazingly smart. And so I, I thought, you know, that was a, a really kind of a unique experience. So I, I was really glad that I got to sneak in there at the last minute because, uh, it was, it was really quite a, quite a show. And, and it does, it, it just keeps putting Hawthorne on the map. You know, Hawthorne is not a big city, but when you think back on, um, Northrop Grumman and now SpaceX, um, you know, we've, we've made a, a big contribution in, in, uh, in aerospace and in technology and innovation. And this guy, uh, with SpaceX, he's, that was brilliant how he got so many kids to come up with the solution to what we're gonna use in the future without spending a tremendous amount of money. You know, I mean, the guy's pretty sharp because he's got the brightest and the, and the best kids from all over the world coming to Hawthorne and competing on technology that he'll ultimately use if somebody comes up with the right idea. So, uh, these are very, very, uh, clever and, and bright, innovative people. It was a great show. I got to spend a little time with Olivia over there, and it was nice. That's, uh, and thank you for everybody coming. But it was, it was a great show. I wish that they made it easier for, uh, uh, members of the community to go. It was, you know, you had to have a special invitation to get there. But it was a good show. Yeah, that's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Council member Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, actually, you know, the Hyperloop was pretty good because they, they just, you know, showcased all, all those, uh, international talents, you know, Armenia, Pakistan, Japan. But the one thing that he did also, you know, put all the Tesla cars outside.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, you know, the bricks that he, you know, when he digged the tunnel, he got that, uh, dirt and turned into bricks that he, one day, he's going to donate to, to build low-income housing. So, uh, he put all of that, you know, uh, in display over there, you know, with a boring machine, you know, part of it. So everything was, was out there. So it was fantastic to see that. Again, you know, I wanna thank the community because, you know, uh, I've been Hawthorne President's Council for more than fifteen years. And, uh, every year, you know, we do the K nine barbecue dinner, uh, and the community comes out and support the police department and the K nine unit. So I wanna thank them for helping the Hawthorne President's Council and also helping me, you know, raise the money that we just gave to the chief, Ishi. Uh, it shows that our community cares, and the police is very loved out there, so we'll continue to do that. I just wanted to ask a request from, uh, Felice is right there. Uh, because I know the Sociedad Jose Martin is gonna have their Cuban Festival. Uh, so can I donate two hundred dollars out of my stipend to them? And also, I would like to send two hundred dollars to the Singer Center, uh, for, because they need coffee and tea. Uh, so, uh, I want to donate two hundred dollars for the Singer Center and two hundred dollars to Sociedad Jose Martin, uh, for this, because it's coming soon. So, uh, that is my, and also, Arnie, uh, I don't know if you can start thinking about, but when we go out there in the community and to other cities, we don't have no marketing brochure to marketing Hawthorne. Okay, so I want you to come up with some idea, uh, that maybe we come up with some type of a marketing brochure, a marketing video. So if we end up going to some seminars or some events, so we have these materials that we can present to sell them Hawthorne. What can we offer? Because Hawthorne have a lot of things to offer, so we wanna bring more business, more restaurants. So we need some type of marketing materials to, uh, advertise our city. Okay, so please look into that. And I think, uh, have a great summer, everyone. Uh, July's almost over, August is coming, so have fun, be safe, stay cool, and, you know, love your neighbors, okay? Help them out. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Uh, Mayor Protem, Olivia Valentine?
Uh, yes, I just wanna piggyback on what my other colleagues have said about the Hyperloop. Uh, on Sunday, I had the pleasure of giving opening remarks at the Hyperloop. And I was so, I was so pleased to be able to, to meet all these young engineers from around the world. Um, the Hyperloop is not, I mean, it's a, it's a great, it's a great idea to have a competition. And hopefully, what will, what will happen as a result of this is that this is going to be the beginning of a ground transportation system. What they're hoping to do is to, um, have it, has, have the Hyperloop as an alternative to short flights. So, um, and, and I'm, I was just amazed, like everyone else here was amazed, to meet all these smart, young engineers, um, uh, from so many different places, from Switzerland, from, from, I met a team from India, um, from Belgium. There were twenty-one teams competing, only four making it to the finals. But I have to add, um, not one American team made it to the finals. So my, uh, so I, I'm, I'm very dismayed about that. I'm not happy about that. Um, I think our young people need to be less concerned with being YouTube celebrities and more concerned with competing with scientists on the world stage. This is, you know, years ago, this would not have been the result. They, they actually took a poll to ask what our young people wanted to be. And when they compared our young people with, with China, the, the Chinese young people in China wanted to be astronauts. That was their top choice. And our top choice, our children's top choice, was YouTube celebrities. So I think there's something wrong with that picture. I think we need, we, we need to work on that. And, and that, that requires a community effort. National Night Out, I wanna thank you very much for, um, for, uh, for all of the communities that have come out and expressed an interest in having National Night Out again. So, um, it looks like we're gonna have quite a large, uh, contingent of, um, communities participating. We've got Holly Park, Holly Glen. We've got, um, Parkside Village. We've got three sixty at the South Bay. And, um, I don't wanna leave anyone else. That's all I've got so far. And of, oh, of course, our Hou, our Hawthorne Police Department. Absolutely, they are the stars of National Night Out. So, and we've got a lot of nice activities planned for everyone and good food. So this is going to be another great Hawthorne hometown community event, August sixth at six P.M. So everyone be there. Thank you all for coming out on your, on this lovely summer night, and have a wonderful summer, and we'll see you at the end of August. And, um, happy summer, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you so much. Um, yeah, so this was the fourth Hyperloop competition. And absolutely, I agree with you guys, everybody who said it, um, for this great idea on having the students come up with the idea as to the most efficient, um, transport vehicle, the engineering behind it, taking place in like so many locations around the world and just coming here and showcasing. I mean, they, they have access to what the other people did in the previous competitions. So they know what they need to improve. So the, I mean, by the fourth competition, right now, what you're seeing, two hundred and fifty miles per hour and two, two seconds to break, that's, I, I can guarantee you, that's a, uh, meteoric, meteoric, you know, development over the previous iterations. So, I mean, I mean, that's genius, exactly. So, uh, I commend, I commend Elon Musk for, you know, for this. And I'm pretty sure we'll have a solution for transport, at least the transport vehicle. The infrastructure for it, that's a different story. I mean, we gotta figure out how we tunnel through the, all of LA to be able to get this done. Um, but Elon Musk will probably have a, you know, some genius idea for that, too. So, piggybacking on your, on your comment about domestic talent for STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. I mean, I come from a math and science background. My major's in physics, master's, whatever. And I, I was one of two, we had a class of like fifteen. I was one of two American students. Everybody else was foreign. So, as physicists, so people coming on visas, student visas, et cetera. You know what? School systems can do whatever they wanna do. I mean, sometimes they need to pay the bills, et cetera. I mean, sometimes they need to pay the bills, et cetera. But there's so many minority students, American students, uh, people who live here, even if they don't have, you know, all the paperwork right. But there's so much domestic talent that needs to be fostered and it hasn't been, I feel. And, uh, there has been reports about STEM students, uh, that, uh, the, my, people of color haven't been represented well within the science, technology, engineering, and math. And there's reports on it, et cetera. So absolutely, I agree with you on that. I agree with, uh, I think our country, our federal government needs to be, play a part in that, uh, with, with regards to its method of giving grants for students that are studying, um, focusing on all American students or all people living, or all students living here in the United States and making sure we develop our own homegrown talent when it comes to that. Or else you're gonna have people coming through the airports that are gonna be taking up these engineering jobs up in Silicon Valley and displacing American workers, right? That's, we wanna make sure that we all have jobs over here, too. So that was kind of a little example of that. But, I mean, we also as people, people who've gone through science and all the different fields, we can also be those, uh, role models, too, to gain the students' interest in the subjects, too. It's not that straightforward, but, I mean, we can see the path forward on that. The President's Council Dinner and all the, the both dinners that you guys host, you know, for the both causes, uh, I, I wanna commend the President's Council, uh, council member Alex Montero for that. Um, because it's, you're, you're, you're raising money for a great cause. But also, when you go to these events, everybody, people who haven't seen each other, it's like a periodic way of meeting people. So you get to see people that you haven't seen come out of their homes, some, because a lot of people don't come out for a lot of stuff. For, for a lot of people, this is their way of, uh, so, uh, fellowship, meeting other residents that are members of the community. And they come out and people spend their like a couple, two or three hours of being able to socialize. And it's a great way of, you know, seeing people. Uh, Mrs. Nible, you know, she's, hasn't come to our meetings, but she's always at every single one of those dinners. And that's a great opportunity for me to see her and for everybody else to see her. Um, so a lot of people just mostly come out for that event and they don't come out for anything else. And so congratulations on being able to host that event and offering a way of raising money. But I personally think a way of getting the community together to intermingle and to, and to socialize. So thank you for that. Did somebody, so we, so again, the Kids' Day is a free back-to-school supplies and fun activities at Hope Chapel, that's on Sunday, August 18th at 10:00 A.M. Hope Chapel's located at thirteen five sixty Hawthorne Boulevard, Hawthorne, California, nine oh two five oh. So, uh, I guess that's it for me. I'm looking forward to the Jose Marti, uh, event. There's gonna be a great salsa music there, great food, a lot of socializing, too. So we invite the whole community, community to come out. We don't have to have major events, we don't have to have big productions, but as long as we in the community can have like all these events, you know, that if people have an opportunity to go to, it doesn't have to be big. So hopefully you guys from across the city come over to this side and people from this side can go across to other points in the city to be able to, uh, meet their neighbors. Okay, we're all, Hawthorne is not just a finger, it's not just the toe, it's a whole body. And when all of Hawthorne works well, you know, the whole of city, the city of Hawthorne prospers, okay? So let's see, is that it? Does anybody else have any go-bangs? All right, so I'm really happy to announce that today we have had a fifty-three-minute meeting, a world record of city council meetings. It would have been fifty-one minutes, Mr. City Clerk, and you know why? Don't say nothing. All right, guys, thank you all for coming, have a good day.